Yes, we're live now.
Okay. Good evening. I would like to now call to order the February 24th, 2025 Clark County School Board meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions about tonight's agenda? May I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Any questions about the consent agenda? May I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
And that was about the gifts, right? Like this?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to make a comment.
Sure.
Um, just a tremendous thank you to Accra Capital Management and for the $2,500 for the track jumping pit, I think. And then also to Coach Osslander is, I guess, his family for the contributions that they made to the basketball team.
Yeah. Okay, recognition for Mr. Van Sis.
Good evening. We'd like to take a few minutes to recognize Coach Van Sis, who is a former Clark County High School wrestling coach, who will be the 2025 National Wrestling Hall of Fame honoree. We'd like to recognize Mr. Van Sis for such a prestigious career and a most deserved recognition. He retired after 24 seasons from coaching Clark County High School Barstee Wrestling in 2024. Some accomplishments included winning the 2015 Virginia High School League Class II state title and surmounting over 400 dual meet victories. So, we're very thankful and like to recognize him. And if Mr. Van Sis or anybody from the family would like to say anything, you're more than welcome to do so.
I'd like to thank the board for taking the time to have me on the agenda today. It's been a real privilege to coach here at the high school for the past 24 years. Met some great, great people, some great guys, still have relationships with after all that time. It's quite an experience and I wouldn't trade it for anything. Also, I'd like to point out who started that program, who was AD when that program started? That was Randy Trenary, back in 1998. He's worn many hats, several hats since then. There wouldn't have been no wrestling program if he wouldn't have been the AD at that time.
That's awesome.
I think that's something that is long forgotten by most everybody in the community, except the people who were actually there at that time. I'd like to thank him for what he ever he put out to start that program. He really threw us into the fire. We had about 30 kids and none of them, except one, only one of them, had ever even seen a wrestling match before. We had no coaching experience between the three coaches. We had no hat, we didn't have a place to practice. It was all just roll the dice and see what happens. But it continued and it all worked out and had a really good run through the 20, 27 years of our program. So, I appreciate, appreciate the recognition and it was a real privilege to work with them and them for as long as I did. Thank you.
Well, sir, I'd like to thank you for all that you've done. Coaches are certainly role models and a lot goes beyond just winning or losing, but, you know, being a model for the community. And I've heard great things about you and someone you mentioned, Mr. Trenary, is a wonderful gentleman and I think highly of him. So, I appreciate you saying that very much so. If any members of our board would like to say anything at this time?
I always felt a little jilted because when I was in Clark County, we didn't have wrestling and I graduated in 88. But I always, we always were sorry that we didn't have that. But when you came on and Randy started that program and where it is now is just tremendous. And unfortunately, I was always wanting to be a part of that, but it's a great thing that what you have accomplished and the people that have come out of it. And it's, it's really a testament to you and to all of your people and your staff. So, just thank you very much. I wish we could go back in time and you could have showed up about 10 years earlier.
Anybody else?
So, if you don't mind. Oh, go ahead. So, obviously, your family is, is very, very special to me and I'm thankful that you've given so much time to our community. And I really enjoyed reading the article that was attached in the board docs because I didn't know that you and Kyle would practice moves prior to like a practice so that you could, so that you could demonstrate or help your dad demonstrate things that you were going to work on during practice. And it was just really special to read and I'm sure that there's so much more that I don't know, like just moments like that, that you all had as a family. And so, I just want to say thank you for all that you've given to, to so many kids in our community and in the time that your family has given. Because it certainly has, wasn't just you, but thank you.
There's people in the background there for sure. You take some buildings, so they say.
Yeah.
Certainly did. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd just let me read just quickly in this little attachment we have, the, the quote that in your letter that you received from the National Wrestling Hall of Fame, you use the disciplines learned from wrestling to become a role model to young people, making the right decision as opposed to the easy decision, easy decision when confronted with difficult life choices. This award acknowledges that your life was significant and you are leaving behind a benchmark example and legacy. John, you will always have a special place in wrestling history and that place is the National Wrestling Hall of Fame. So, congratulations. I would also like to thank you for your patience during COVID because I know wrestling was there was definitely a spotlight on it. So, we really appreciate you helping the team get through that as well. So, thanks very much. And we can clap again. Okay, data review. Dr. Balling.
No, Renee, to get up there, she's already got the first screen up there. One of the hallmarks that I think is an important trait of effective leadership is being transparent and looking at successes and places that we can go. So, what I've done is I initially did a quick data review from the state data from Build a Table since 2006 forward. But then I did ask a friend of mine to make it look better because I'm not the best at making things look pretty after I've done it. But anyway, there are, and it did change around 2022, I believe is the year that Covington City Schools merged with Allegheny Highland. And at one point, when that started in '06, there would have been 132 school divisions. Somewhere around 2022, that became 131 school divisions. But one thing that the VDOE does each year is rank divisions by pass rates on the state SOL assessments. Now, I do acknowledge that there is a whole lot more to effective teaching than just this, but it is certainly one indicator of progress that we're doing, you know, what we're doing. I certainly wish that things like the arts and music would be included, you know, CTE is, but there are things that are certainly left out of this matrix. But certainly it's important because it's the four core areas in writing. So, when you look at that, being able to produce people, our graduates, that are able to take a reading passage and comprehend what's in it and make high level decisions or do math problems is certainly important. So, I do think it is definitely a value. And if you look at 2024, overall Clark County Public Schools was 57th in the state. There's 131 divisions that year. So, that means roughly about 70 somewhere below us. So, definitely in the upper half there, which is a good place to be. And you can see that since 2006, in the overall, the lowest that I see that we've been is 70th in the state and the highest is 35th. So, that's kind of the range we've been in, but we can't monitor where we've been and where we're going unless we have discussions of these things. So, what that table is, it's a summary of reading, writing, mathematics, history, and science SOL assessment pass rates as a whole. And they just aggregate all that together and that's where we're at would be 57th out of 131 districts as of last year. So, definitely in the upper half, we could definitely, you know, make some progress there and work on that. The next two, two or three slides here, and I won't read all of them because there are a lot of individual tests and things like that. But the very next one just actually looks at all the tests combined by discipline and it actually looks at our subgroups as well as far as how we've done. And for instance, if you look at our overall reading last year, we were 66th out of 101, 131 in reading. We were 28th out of 131 in writing. And something that I do find interesting about that statewide, much more districts more often struggle by far with writing than reading, which is an interesting, you know, piece there. But we were 28th out of 131 in writing. We were 27th out of 131 in history. So, writing and history were definitely strong points for us. Our area of the most struggle was 75th out of 131 for the overall population in mathematics and 59th out of 131 in science. The next few screens are what I wanted to show you all and you all can certainly look at on board docs or break it down, but I did it by every single assessment that we give, starting in third grade where they start. And you can kind of see the overall of how we fared in each one of those grade levels by assessment. Some of the ones I would speak to being highlights for being really strong was grade eight writing. We were 28th in the state for that one. And then and actually we were, I'll have to count it down. I know that it is a strong point, but it kind of broke page to page. We were actually 20th in the state in the grade eight writing, okay? But anyway, you can kind of see some of the areas that are higher for us and some of the areas that are a little bit lower based on that. And we'll recognize some of our higher achievement accomplishments this evening. And then as we go to the very last slide, I think it's kind of an important slide. I'm not great enough at doing charts to do this, so I had another, a friend of mine do this. It's out of just public data, but that's why all the other divisions are on there. It's a presentation that he normally gives, but I had him to go ahead and identify the point for Clark. And what this is, is a chart of academic performance versus relative poverty. And typically, you're, you know, considered to be doing the most exceptional work when you're really going against the trend and closing subgroup population differences and are far above that. That line down through there is the line of best fit or the regression line there of how districts perform versus poverty. When you look at the green up there, those are the 10 top performing districts working with students from diverse backgrounds and poverty is what those are. But you can see where Clark is at, we're very close. And over halfway up there, there's a lot more dots below us, but our poverty rate is pretty low too. So, that's where we're at. We're pretty close to the trend line. But I just wanted to give you all kind of a glimpse of where we were at as baseline and where we were at last year and to keep looking at this stuff as things go on. And I've asked for some brief data updates. I've asked that maybe we look at our Virginia Literacy Act data and our literacy plans and BALS data at the next meeting, okay? Do y'all have any questions for me of that information?
No, thank you for putting this together.
Yep. You're very welcome.
Yes, thank you.
The next part will be my update and we have a lot because it seems like February is the month that we recognize everyone. So, it's a good thing because it's positive, but we do have quite a bit of things to look at tonight. One of the first things I'd like to recommend is thank the five of you all because School Board Appreciation Month is February and February 25 has been dedicated to the honor and dedication of over 800 school board members in Virginia during BSBA School Board Appreciation Month. The theme this year, Champions of Opportunity Advocates for Excellence, highlights the efforts made by school board members to create pathways to student achievement and innovation. This month-long observation is an opportunity for local school divisions and communities to build stronger understanding of the crucial role school boards assume in representative democracy. School boards voluntarily tackle the enormous job of governing multimillion dollar public school divisions while preserving the core of our democratic values. So, certainly like to thank the five of you all. And something we have for you tonight is the schools got you all some gifts. We made you up some gift baskets for that recognition.
Thank you.
All right, the next part is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week is February 17th through the 21st. So, Ms. Renee certainly keeps all of us in line and is probably the most valuable employee that we have in this division. So, we are very thankful for her. And we have a few little gifts for you that we'll present to you here in a little bit too, okay?
Thank you.
All right, then also February is Black History Month and Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievement by African Americans and a time for recognizing their central role in US history. President's Day is Monday or was Monday, February 17th and is celebrated every year on the third Monday of February to mark the birth anniversaries of the legendary former presidents of our country, George Washington and Abraham Lincoln. Also, February is Career and Technical Education Month in Virginia. So, we certainly understand how important that division of our academic core is and that everything that they do, because it takes us all working together and those are skills that can help any of our graduates. So, we're really thankful for them and we included a bunch of dates that we're doing with CTE from February to April for you all to look at. Also, Pre-K Expo will be held in Clark County on March 7th from 2:30 to 6:00 and there's a flyer there included for your all's information. Also, February includes National School Counseling Week, which is celebrated February 3rd through the 7th of 2025 or was, to highlight the tremendous efforts of school counselors to meet social, emotional needs, academic endeavors, and career aspirations. The theme for 2025 is School Counseling, Helping Students Thrive. School counselors are devoted professionals who help students work through challenges as they unite their own interests and talents. Our counselors are vital to education. Also, this year, Virginia Kindness Week happens in February, which is February 10th through the 14th, which looked at ways that schools can promote and foster kindness all year. However, each year in Virginia, we celebrate Kindness Week during the second week in February. Kindness Week has a purpose to recognize the simple day-to-day acts of kindness that enable our schools, communities, and state to be a kinder, safer, healthier, and more inclusive place to live, work, learn, and play. As to why kindness matters, kindness helps us to form meaningful connections with others, which are reported to be a strong factor in increasing happiness. Kindness has been proven to boost serotonin, reduce stress, increase positive effect, and release endorphins and the hormone oxytocin in numerous scientific studies. Teaching and recognizing kindness in schools and communities fosters empathy, builds community, reduces bullying, nurtures a safe and welcoming environment. By promoting kindness, we're promoting inclusivity, by extending an opportunity for grace, empathy, dignity, and acceptance across Virginia. Okay, and then also wanted to recognize our very own Patrick Hausmann will be the keynote speaker at the Annual Tech Splash Conference in Abington, Virginia on July the 7th, 2025. And then we have a few teacher recognitions for outstanding student learning outcomes that I would like to do and that relates to that data presentation that we just looked at. The first big standout was Tessa Fosha taught World Geography last year at Clark County High School. Clark County Public Schools had the fourth highest pass rate on the World Geography SOL Assessment out of 131 school divisions. And I think that's even more impressive because some divisions, you may not have everybody taking it according to what they use as the gatekeeper class. But at Clark County High School, everyone either takes World Geography or World History Two. So, Ms. Fosha, if you'd like to say anything, we have a certificate for you, but you don't have to.
Thank you. You're welcome to. If you'd like. Just wanted to say thank you to everybody at Clark County. This division has been such a great fit these last nine years and I'm really excited about this and we had a great group of students last year too, so I have to give them credit.
Great, well done.
Thank you. And then Ms. Rachel Crawford taught World History Two last year at Clark County High School and Clark County Public Schools had the highest, in other words, first place pass rate on the World History Two SOL Assessment out of 131 school divisions. So, Ms. Crawford?
Sure. Like Ms. Fosha said, we have a really great team that we work with. We had a really great group of students last year and we're really, really thankful that we get all the support that we do, that they let us teach how we know how to teach and, and we get some great results from it. So, thank you guys and thank you to our team.
Thank you. Um, oh, do you want to do that?
As we're preparing, I'll quickly put this together because we were getting everybody's last signatures, but we did go ahead and frame Renee's certificate of appreciation and signed it. So, wanted to go ahead and give that to you. So I wanted to go ahead and give that to you.
Thank you. All right.
I think the recognition continues first, then you can say some.
So I feel like, I feel like every year I'm, I'm, you know, letting you know how important you are to us, and you're our glue, and we would die without you, and blah, 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 which is all true. But this year, because I'm in the spirit of using AI responsibly, I asked, I asked Genesis, I think it's Genesis from Google, or Gemini, sorry, to write a poem for you, for clerk, clerk of the school board. So here we go. Behind the desk where paper stacks reside, reside, a quiet force where order does abide. The clerk of board with steady knowing hand, a keeper of the records of this learning land. From budget lines to meetings careful trace, they navigate the rules with practiced grace. The minutes kept with every eye and nay, a history preserved of each and every day. The policies they know, the codes they keep, while restless voices rise in secret sleep. They file the forms and answer every call, a silent guardian watching overall. The contracts signed, the notices displayed, the calendar they hold where plans are made. They know the parents' names, the teachers' pleas, the subtle currents flowing through the trees. No ground, no grand pronouncements, no spotlight setting glare, but diligence and care beyond compare, a steady rhythm in the school's grand scheme, the clerk of board fulfilling every train. So, thank you. And surprisingly, this is you, so it's amazing. So anyway, obviously, the little orchid is our, is sort of a little gesture of appreciation. I did look up the order, the meaning of giving an order as a gift. One was fertility. That is not why we gave it to you. We gave it to you for thoughtfulness. That is also a reason for giving an orchid. So again, thank you for everything. I'm going to give you this so you can post it in the, in the minutes, because I'd like it in the minutes for you, so.
Yes, so I can copy and paste.
Yes, you're welcome. So anyway, any other comments from Ms. Renee?
And I'd certainly like the other board members to be able to say something. One thing I wanted to do before we had moved on, though, I did leave off with the two teachers' recognition that, you know, I would like to thank them as outstanding leaders and educators and inspiring students and making a difference. And I want you to know that I realize that your impact goes far beyond these SOL assessments, but they are one measure of outstanding teaching. And before we move on to any other board comments about recognitions, we only got one, so you all can kind of fight over it. But in addition to your baskets, BSBA sent you all a card.
Oh, that's nice. Probably. We can, we can change it around every week, guys. Thank you. Any other comments from anybody? No?
Yeah, Ms. Weir. I got that certificate, and I started to think of all the help you gave me when I joined this board. And I said, if I write down everything, every area in which you helped me, there won't be any room for anybody else to write. So I just wrote, "Thanks, but believe it is heartfelt and profound."
Thank you. I want to thank you all very much for recognizing that work, but you all make it easy. All five of you and all of those people that sit out there, they're my friends, as well as you all, and you all make it easy. And I want to thank you all for the work you do and for hiring the best people, including the superintendent, and assist it right on down to everybody. You all have consistently made what I think the best choices for this community, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And thanks for all you do. I mean, it's no, it's a thankless job, as we know, but for you all to dedicate your time to this is much appreciated. And just like Renee said, having you all on the board definitely makes us easy, and I appreciate how well we work together. And I'd like to also acknowledge how I can call you my friends as well, so. Thanks for everything, especially you, Mr. Wilson. You bring us all joy.
Well, look at the guidance you're getting.
I think he wrote that poem.
Yeah, right.
It'd certainly be a lot easier to write poems now than when I grew up.
And before our teachers leave, because we don't expect you all to stay through all of this, thank you both. It's, I've had the fortunate pleasure of getting, of getting to know both of you because of having students in both of your classes. And I'm just really tremendously grateful for the fact that you've stayed with us and that you've stuck with us through, you know, the COVID mess and just all sorts of things. But I am so grateful that my children have had the opportunity to be in your classes. You're both top-notch teachers, and they and their friends, you know, have really positive, great things to say about both of you. So proud of you. Thank you for being here.
Okay, audience comments. Audience comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those wishing to speak should fill out a comments card. Ms. Weir? Nope? Okay.
Excuse me. Ladies, could you wait just one second till we take a break here? I'd like to thank you.
And you all might actually, you know, it'd be good, too, because we don't have too much more, and you'll get to learn about the calendar and the budget, so. The budget, that's applicable. So you can hear about the budget. That'd be great.
Next year, she can do it for you.
Hold on. I thought we'd do pretty good with retention if you start requiring them to stay for the whole board meeting. That might not work.
That's true.
Ladies, I've been in two wars and a peacekeeping operation, and I realize just how important it is that we learn what has happened, the mistakes that have been made, and not just that, how to prevent them in the future. I've got, well, you are important. Thank you.
Um, was there any comments? No? Okay. You really don't have to say it, but if you want to, like more.
And we can take a break at any point to talk.
Yeah, let's just take a couple, couple, couple minutes. Yeah, okay. We'll do that for just a couple of minutes. Can you tell Daryl? Okay, fine. Okay. Okay, Dr. Bowlen, you want to talk about the calendar?
Yes, and we did this and looked at it as an initial look last month. And you kind of had the time there to look at draft one and draft two. Basically, the big difference in draft one and draft two is the start date. Draft one has the first day for students to be August the 19th. It's only one day later, but draft two has it as August the 20th. That probably relates a lot to sometimes it's very challenging when you're doing lower elementary, the longer initial week. Other than that, everything's just kind of moved around. And then one other difference is draft, the draft two has a four-day weekend for everybody but our 12-month staff in February, around the 13th through the 16th. And that is not in draft one. Other than that, they're pretty much the same. The feedback we got from doing the survey was that 73% of our staff preferred draft one, so 73% of our employees preferred draft one, which is the first student day being August the 19th. Both calendars reduced what we had this year, which was 195 days, that our teaching staff was committed to being in the school and had to be in the school. Went from 195 down to 190. The, we were already given, you know, awarding credit for five days because Virginia Code says a teaching contract is 200 days. But we did have everybody comparatively to the local area in the building more than any other district. But we do know that teachers do a tremendous amount of grading and planning at home and things that are not always measured in days. It may come in an hour and a half here, two hours here. So I want to, I think it's very important for efficacy and also for autonomy to treat professionals as professionals. So what we're doing is saying the days between 190 and 200 are awarded for your planning and your grading, which happens often off the clock at home. So there's an equal number of days that teachers would report. There's 176 student days in both calendars with 14 work days in both calendars, which is where you get to the 190. There are actually three additional work days in there for new employees. So I do want to make sure everybody understands that new teachers would be working 193 days in our buildings. Okay? As far as the comments related to it, it's probably the most, you know, I would say debatable issue, and I think maybe debatable that way is much kinder phrase, is the elementary work days. And that really divides our employees dramatically, you know, between the elementary then versus the middle and the high school level. And one of the things, though, I think there's good arguments, you know, considering, one of them being that elementary work days really make it harder for our community and other employees that need childcare on those days. But that's not our primary focus as an educational institution, is not to provide childcare. It's just one consideration. But on the other side of that, I'll, is the fact that our elementary teachers do get a lot less, you know, planning time. And everywhere I've been, and in one place it was never really brought up as a difference, they, it was just, everybody was pretty mellow about it. But that is pretty much synonymous, I think, with about every school division in the Commonwealth, especially when you have a lot of middle and high schools that are on block schedules, which have a 90-minute period, that elementaries have less. But I do recognize that they've got a tremendous amount of grading, planning, and hard work to do. So I certainly have empathy. One other consideration with that is we've been using the unscheduled remote learning days, but technically, those are meant for more inclement weather-type things and emergencies. And we do have to provide instruction to count those as days. Otherwise, we should be making them up. One thing that we did get clarification on, though, the manual says that every division, if they use a remote learning day, should plan for continuation of meal services, breakfast and lunch. I kind of read since it's in the manual, there wasn't any clarification that should meant you would do it. And I'd never heard of any division not providing food, but somebody had mentioned that they were going to do it without it. So we did contact, Renee did the food services, and they said it's not a required thing to provide meals. It's just a suggested best practice. And it would be very challenging if, due to weather, we ever did a remote learning day to provide meals because we're not a community-eligible breakfast and lunch-at-no-cost division. So if we provided meals, we'd have to be deciding who to charge and who not, and sending food home, or that's just very difficult, which would add another layer to it. But I wanted to give you all the background overall that. Having said that, I think there's one elementary work day which remains in this, both calendar options that we would work around. But I believe the best option is for me to work alongside our elementary principals and some of our other central office staff and see if there's any way possibly that we could build additional planning time into the day. I'm not guaranteeing that could happen, but I think if that could happen, that's the best answer.
Other than that, I'll take any questions and then just let you all decide which calendar you approve.
I know when we had a discussion about this last month, we did, I think, come to a consensus that we are in favor of draft number one only because that seems to be the one that the teachers favored and preferred. But has anybody had any additional thoughts about it? Or do we feel comfortable approving draft one? No? Okay, may I have a motion?
I move to approve draft one for the 2025-2026 Clark County Public Schools calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Budget proposal? Budget proposal?
Right, and what I'll do, because there's not that much new from the previous, so I'll just hit what's new and then let you all ask any questions of me that you would like to. Basically, since last time, what has developed at the state level, and I'll kind of tell you, there are nothings in stone, but some different directives. Do you remember that approximately 292,000 that we may get in additional state money if the House or Senate budget were to pass? Well, what's happened since then is last week, they made it, were able to come up with a conference budget, and it actually was pretty quick compromise. And everything for education stayed almost essentially unchanged. So the additional monies for special education, for the support cap removal, and those other minor items actually did remain in there. And it made it through to the General Assembly final budget. They voted on Saturday, and that did pass the General Assembly. So we do have a General Assembly budget. And they've not put out a COUT tool yet based on that, but it would be very close to the VDOE's estimate of 292. And that's probably a conservative estimate, because when they do those, they go pretty low on ADM, and they base that on 1,791 students. We're actually at 1,850, so it would probably be a little bit more. But when you look at a pot that's not like our overall budget, that's like 292, it's really not going to move it up that much farther. So pretty much everything remained in there for the General Assembly budget. One other thing that did come out of that is it was included as a vote to do a $1,000 educator bonus, made it through, but it wouldn't be under that, it's in addition to the 292,000-ish, because the educator bonus was put in as an amendment, a late amendment to fiscal year '25, which is kind of really unusual, but something that we would still be grateful for. And I believe they did either a one or a one-and-a-half percent bonus for state workers as well. But the timeline was different for both chambers, but in the conference budget, it's, any bonuses have to be paid out on or before June 1st, 2025. So that really would not be a factor in next year's budget. I just want you all to understand that. And it's in there that it's recommended for districts if they can, because it's a non-LCI, non-match-based bonus. But what that means is they give $1,000 plus FICA for every SOQ position. But there's no district in the Commonwealth of Virginia that operates solely on SOQs, because it's a very skeletal staffing model. And districts probably range, most of them between 40% to 60% of their workforce are actually non-SOQ positions. So it was in there noted that for divisions to try to prioritize if they could come up with the funding for everybody else, but if they could not, that you could take the total allotment if it passes finally and divide it evenly among your workforce. So that is a possibility as well. That does not mean that the budget is done. It would been sent on to the governor, that he could sign it as is, or he could reject it and send it back. So we're at this point that the state budget may be done, or we could even start over. You know, we've got till June 30th, but that's pretty much the update on what's happened with the state budget. Hearing what you all were mainly interested with, we worked on executive summary number three. And executive summary number three is the one with the 4% salary increase. It also includes the, all the new positions of $264,747. But we had some of the best news possible. I believe it was Friday or Thursday of last week, I sent it to you all when we got it. But we were waiting on health insurance, and we had $301,000 penciled in there for a potential of up to 10% increase. And we got a 0% increase. So our health insurance is going to be exactly even priced to this current year FY '25. So we were able to remove a full $301,000 from executive summary number four. Now, it's still overall positive news, but a little disheartening thing is our insurance provider for workman's comp and all of our insurance plans goes on a three-year rolling average, which is pretty common. But we actually had a workman's comp claim, I think, back in, maybe a couple, three years ago or so, in like FY '23, that now the year before it was lower. So now it has more of a bearing effect, so our workman's comp insurance went up $30,000. And we didn't anticipate that. We've been told it would probably be around even. So basically, we were able to remove $301,000 from health insurance, but we did have to put $30,000 back in for our workman's comp insurance. So we netted around $270,000 in savings there. And on the state budget, if it gets signed soon, we'll probably net close to $300,000, which would help the locality that's not in there currently. Right now, another thing that we did today, we're just really working hard to be good stewards of money. The Capitol Committee and I met today, and it may make it kind of tight, but we wanted to really try to help the county as much as we could. So we were able to allocate, really being very tight with money, 135,000 of removing it from other projects little bit by little bit today, and allow Randy to go ahead and buy one of the two buses this year, which would then remove another 135,000 out of the request, and it's already in there. So including taking the other bus out, we've got our total general fund tax funding increased to 1.263 million. And that's still, you know, quite a bit, but we've worked really hard to get to that point. And I really want to thank Nancy, because she provided this today and got that done for us. But it's 1.263 million would be our total increase with the 4% raise. And I think that's everything. But I'll take any questions that you all have. Or Brenda can answer when I don't know to.
Any, any comments?
I think it's all pretty good news. And I certainly appreciate going through it and scraping and pulling that together and getting that bus for this year.
Getting that bus, yep.
That's a, that's a big thing.
Yeah, and we were really fortunate, because we have to take possession by June 30th. And I really want to thank Randy, Mr. Canary, too, because when I said we might do this, I want to make, because it's, you know, it's his funding under Capitol. But within that time, he went ahead and called, and there are six buses on lots that are not sold at this point. So that made this more plausible, too.
Anything else? I know we talked a lot about this during the work session and our meeting last month, but, I mean, I think to Clay's point, having the insurance come in at 0% increase is, is a huge win for us, so, you know.
Well, one and all.
Yeah. Anything? Nope, all right. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the FY '26 operating capital and food service budgets as proposed.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Bowling, well done for your first time here with us. This was, you only came and, just came in December and kind of had to catch on pretty quickly. So we appreciate all your effort in the slicing and dicing and the state information you provided and really explained. I know for all of us, or at least me, but I think for all of us, that was really, that was new and really helped me understand how things work down there, so thank you. And then obviously, Brenda and Nancy are rock stars, thank you very much. I know it's never an easy process, so kudos to everyone.
Thank you all, and it takes a tremendous team, and it's well beyond that scope. There's a lot of other people, but Nancy and Brenda are tremendous.
Yep.
As two leaders in that role.
Yep.
When is this presented to the county?
I've got it in my big blue binder upstairs.
I think it's April, is it April? Or is it March?
I think it may be a week from today, maybe.
Oh, don't tell me that.
It's pretty, yeah, it's pretty soon.
It's when?
Oh, really? That, I was thinking April.
Next Monday night?
March 3rd.
I knew it was soon.
Genesis to help me again. Yes, so please, if everybody can be there this year, that would be great, because we have to, Dr. Bowling will, I'll make a couple comments, and then Dr. Bowling will present to the, to the Board of Supervisors. So I think that's at 6:30.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Consideration of policies for first and second reading. Policy committee met on February 14th and recommended the following policies for first and second. The three are listed there. One of them to highlight quickly, Dr. Bowling, if you'll just talk about it, is the holidays and employee work calendar. That is where we did update to allow for 12-month employees to have five floating holidays.
Right, what we did there, and two of these policies actually interrelate, so really that's why there's three here. You'll notice that the paragraph addition on one of them is the same on both. But basically, we worked hard to try and reduce the number of days that our 10-month employees would have to be physically in the building down to 190. And looking at 12-month positions, it's been brought up to me by, I'd say, five to 10 of our employees, that we actually have our people working more than most other localities in school systems. And this does not put us by any means anywhere near the top of that ranking, but it's a way to at least chip away and reward our 12-month employees for what they do. One way that I could have looked at it was to provide additional holidays and specify those and recommend that for a policy. But one thing that made that challenging is we have two different contract lengths of 12-month employees. We have 240 and 247, which is something that I've not worked with in the past. So if I picked a day that 240 already had off, then there was no benefit to them and there was to 247. So something that's pretty common are floating holidays awarded to 12-month employees. So I looked at some policies that had that from other places in the state. The reason why, you may say, well, why don't we just add on five additional annual days to each category? The reason there is that annual days have a monetary value, because they can be cashed out at the end. So if you give them that, they could be more carryforward, and it could be a larger payout, which makes it have a financial line to the budget or an impact. Also, if we did it on personal days, that would not be a good situation, because our 10-month employees already get personal days, which are three, which is the same as our 12-month. And also, those can be cashed out when you retire. So people could potentially save those days and make them become a financial line item to the budget. The way that floating holidays are done is typically, you know that those are going to be the first five, either what would traditionally be personal or annual days that you use, and you expend those first, because they do not have any balance that can accrue going forward, and they have no monetary value. So if you don't use them between June 1st or July 1st and June 30th, they go away. So it's just something that people can use before going into their annual leave or their personal days. And it certainly doesn't cover all of the breaks that we have off, but it would allow our employees, if they wanted to, to pick five days in those breaks, whether it be in Thanksgiving or spring, that they'd like to take off. And it moves us in, you know, somewhere in a direction that I think that would be most appropriate, but it's also not too far, you know, out of line with how many, how much time our current county government has off. What's a challenge is, this is one of those things that varies completely. There is no standard form throughout the whole state. There are a lot of districts that all 12-month employees get the full Thanksgiving, Christmas, spring break off. And they only come in and work snow days, and the summer's the difference in 12-month and 10-month. And then there are some that have more designated holidays. It's just, there is no standardization to this. But I think that where we have the 240 and the 247, I think that this is the most effective way for us to do this. So I also want to make it, you know, 100% aware that the only employees, because everybody else gets to observe all breaks and holidays, the 10 and 11 month, the only employees that have annual leave or personal are 12-month. So the floating holidays would only apply to 12-month. But the 190 days in the building versus a 200-day contract benefits our 10 and 11 month, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, so that's two of the policies. And then the other one relates to tuition reimbursement. And basically, all it does is allow us to, out of an employee's last paycheck, if they owe us money for paying tuition to work courses, that we can actually dock their pay that amount of what they owe us. Okay? But that's all those three policies are.
Oh, and we did have our attorneys help with that last tuition reimbursement in forms to make sure our language was, was on point, so. Any questions? May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the policies presented.
I move to approve the policies presented as first and second reading.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? School board member comments? Mr. Brumbeck.
I don't really have a whole lot. We have, still have slots open from our governor's school meeting for students, but we were, they did, the director came and visited, and whatever that. And the only thing I was going to mention was, it was great.
Recognizing Coach Van Sison, of course, the wrestling tournament, state tournament was moved to this coming weekend, so that's coming up. So it's in Bristol, it's a little far away for us, but anyway, that's going on. And I would also mention that the girls' basketball team starts regional playoffs tomorrow. So if we don't finish our meeting tonight, we can move it to the gym tomorrow. That's all I really have.
Mr. Wilson?
As you know, I've been kind of out of the whole thing with this bug that's going around for the last month, really. So I really don't have that much to add. I will, I will make it to the basketball game tomorrow. See you there.
Mr. Kennedy?
I'm in the same boat. Don't have much. It's great to get through the budget smoothly. Nice job, well done, everyone. Appreciate that. Hard work and dedication. I know it's no easy task, we got that, and the calendar all wrapped up with little and no heartache, it seems like, so appreciate it.
Ms. Gerhobert?
No, I really don't have a lot. But other than to say thank you to Dr. Bowling, and then also to Brenda and Nancy, and everyone that's, the Board of Supervisors, who've also come twice over the past two months, and then Dr. Seal as well, for our finance meetings that they've taken a lot of time. And so I appreciate the way that it's just really gone seamlessly. And I am genuinely grateful for that, because we've kind of been through a lot of transition. And it feels great to, you know, kind of finally have you here and in place. And I'm just very, very grateful for that, because I was getting kind of tired. And I'm just very, very grateful for that because I was getting kind of tired. But, and then also, thank you to Ms. Weir and also Mr. Van Sis and then the teachers that were here earlier. That's it.
So many thank yous to go around. So just appreciate you, as always, our principals and everybody else here for being here tonight on a Monday evening. And that's it for me. So may I have a motion for convening to close session?
Sure. I move to convene a closed session to discuss personnel matters, including appointments, resignations, and performance of a teacher pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. Estimated time required for the closed session is 30 minutes and action is expected.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. I also want to say thank you to the schools for our lovely baskets. I can tell you, I enjoy them and love them. So thank you, thank you very much. I look forward to taking a sneak peek.
And one thing before we disband, I will tell you, if any of y'all can go to the state wrestling on Friday, I do know Bristol's a long drive away, but it is a beautiful city and Virginia High is a wonderful facility. I was hopeful that I could go down and watch our boys, but the counter's getting pretty impacted. I don't know that I can, but if you can, Palace is a local Southern fast food chain down there and it's pretty remarkable and some other things like that. So if you need any advice, I'll give it to you, but it's a, it's a nice place if you can go.
Thanks.
Winner Jimmy Carter said.
We're live now.
They have a motion to reconvene to open session, please.
I move to reconvene in open session.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, certification?
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, we can say aye, aye, aye.
Pursuant to Code Session 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, how do you certify? Mr. Brumback?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mr. Crumover?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Action base may have a motion for action, please.
I move to...
Accept the personnel.
Accept the personnel agenda.
Yep, I move to accept the personnel agenda as presented, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Great, good, I will adjourn the meeting, thank you. Look at all those ayes and nays.